All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Robin, can you please call roll?
Yes.
Here.
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 All right, on to new business. The first case we're gonna discuss tonight is the rezoning application ZON-22-02, Planned for Land LLC. Can you, you wanna go through the staff report first? Thank you.
Application from Planned for Land LLC regarding the site located at 7959 South Lewis Center. Applicant requesting to rezone one residential lot into three separate lots. Lot one will contain 0.56 acres. Lot two will contain 3 acres. Lot three will contain 3 acres. Lot one currently has existing house design in common. Applicant specifically requesting to rezone our residential lot to single-family Planned Residential District. Most development would comply with all single-family three preservation areas along and more southern parts of the hill. Access easement also exists along South Old State. Accessing to lots will only one of the burdens is requested from Section 10.306, which requires that. So the property is surrounded by single-family Planned Residential District. We have an area on the site plan showing two summary of the zoning request. So development would comply with density, parking, minimum four area development standards. All those would comply with the single-family. Open space requirement, while they are not specifically dedicated to open space, they're proposing to afford two preservation areas around the property. Additional open space maintain right. Township would accept these three preserv- Applicant again is requesting one of the burdens of the planning requirements, given that the standards would be accomplished through the development plan. The only additional comment from staff, the staff would like to request some verification from the applicant for potential house build on lot three on their fourth of these part of what's on. All of this HOA and or county regional planning commission did recommend additional approval. Application subject to confirmance by RBC staff, although it does not require. And if the preservation acts in that assessment, it is satisfactory. Continue detail provided by the sanitary and here's office.
All right, thank you, Robin. Does the applicant wish to come up and address the staff comment as well as go over the project, please? Can you please state your name and address as well?
Could you please with Planned for Land one south area? That's comments of course present, both being presented to our the past year. Lot two, lot three, and lot four. Lot sizes that are planned to be addressed in the five. And not one. Other than the building access. Why is the request is lot split? That was a very similar creation. Also, it's made for this. All down. Very similar. Little question, you're gonna answer a few questions that might happen. One's
Thank you. Any comments from the board?
I think, well, only one I have. I think that whatever lot three there that's in Walker Wood. In my opinion, that has to be a part of the homeowners association. I don't, I just think about that long term, but too many things can go wrong if that's not really part of it.
So the question I have, has the county engineer commented about South Old State? Normally, they like to get rid of the single-family drive access on South Old State. That tends to slow down the traffic. They have to have the cuts through the subdivision. So I was wondering if they voiced anything about this project? And whether or not all the lots should access, I guess it's Hayer Court and the part of Walker Wood. And therefore, you could vacate the curb cut on Old State. So I was wondering if the county engineer had been approached with this.
We did a person for blithering comments. It was our city that probably may not. There's interest.
Okay, 'cause that's, you know, the traffic. And there already is a curb cut on Hayer Road for this lot anyway. So that's why I was like, you're not, you are correct, you're adding two more houses to a subdivision that already has a curb. So for me, that sort of ties into, you put one house in Walker Wood subdivision, why wouldn't you just? Both of them. So do all of them. So that's why I was curious about that. Because again, I know the county engineer doesn't, is trying to limit the number of single-family house curb cuts along Old State.
I think it would also result in
I wasn't gonna bring that up, but yes, that is another issue.
Like I said, we did have enough of that one week discussion that. We're open to discussion.
And lot one is an existing structure that was built quite a while ago, right? It's, it's gonna be hard, I mean, not to say that the HOA requirements are stringent, but it would be, I don't necessarily think, I don't know, it could be a challenge putting that house on the HOA as it's probably, could possibly already have specific violations just because it wasn't part of it to begin with, so.
Well, is that house remaining, or is it being a place with a new one?
It will be renovated, it's a viable proposal.
Okay.
Okay, it'll be provided in the plan. Or isn't rented to be in the whole plan. So it's been on. By a week. I think now. Being accessed. Access. Or how it be.
That curb cut is there existing today for that house, correct?
Yes, it's not like we need two cuts on state or one for us. There's two states. You know, for moving.
Yeah, and from an approach standpoint, I mean, obviously, the existing house is facing Old State, the front of the house, the way that you would, you would approach it, the, looks like the proposed one, you're looking at a front-loaded garage. It would be somewhat of a challenge if that dry load was coming from behind, or that would have to switch to a side load or something like. I'm not, I'm not necessarily opposed to what you're showing here. I don't, I don't have any issues. I think to Dennis's point, the, the house coming off of Hayer Court, I feel like it definitely should probably be included in the HOA just so it maintains the standards of the neighborhood. And, you know, has the same character and
Street front.
Street front design, everything, so yeah. I'm sorry. Do you have more, do you have more comments?
Actually, since you're keeping the existing house that already faces South Old State, it would make sense just to keep that access. I had one time thought that perhaps it was gonna be demolished. That has been known to happen. And if you're starting off with a blank slate, but if you're keeping it and preserving it and bringing it up to code and regulation, it would make sense to keep that access. So if the county engineer has no problems with it. Those who face Old State, and then I agree the one on how to pronounce it, Hayer Court?
Yeah.
Should follow the model set by the neighborhood. So it looks more integrated with the rest of the neighborhood. Isn't sort of, doesn't stand out.
Yeah, I'm not so challenged by the, 'cause it already stands out, right? The way it is right now, it's already, that's like, to me, that's almost an optional thing. For certainly the access points are pretty critical to, to what you ultimately do here. So I guess I'm just saying I'm not so challenged by the homeowners association. Been standing there by itself anyhow, so even if you update it, you're in the neighborhood and hopefully you will comply with whatever they're saying.
Yeah, I think through the process, did it, did you wait for a pull-up?
The only other thing, real quick, so lot two, and I forgot, I forgot my, the grading plan, but the, correct me if I'm wrong, that kind of slopes, that's, that's actually going north. Like the way that that site drains today, correct?
It drains north.
So, so with building up that pad for that house and, and grading around that, do you foresee, or I'm assuming you guys have looked at what impacts, if any, that would have as far as drainage? Is there any, like, inlets being proposed or anything that would be required to, to drain that? Or is it just going into a drainage easement that is, is naturally draining off-site?
Goes all the way to the west.
On Old State, okay. Yeah. Yeah.
Obviously, you're beating.
Okay. Yeah, I, that, that's, that's good to know, because I, what I, obviously, what we don't wanna create is that, you know, there's a low point or something towards the back of that lot, or even to the neighbor to the north where it's shedding the water on, you know, any impervious material or surfaces that are created by that development. But it doesn't, it doesn't appear that way, I just wanted to clarify with you, so.
It's good. I think part of it, but it was last lot split.
Right, right.
They need with water.
Yeah, yeah, and they, and they usually handle all that. I'm just, just from a development standpoint, I would make sure it was, it was thought through a little bit.
The potential.
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely. Any other comments from the board?
I think the layout of this lot makes a lot of sense, given the other single-family houses along South Old State are all board-facing. I think if we, you know, turn them, as mentioned before, that would mess up the consistency. But I also concur with the desire to make sure lot number three is incorporated to the HOA.
All right, at this time, we'll open it up to public comment. I will ask that comments are kept to three minutes or less and avoid any redundancies. So if someone already makes a comment or something similar to what you were gonna say, we don't, you know, just, just one time and then we'll have the applicant addresses those comments. So when you, when you come up to speak, just give your name and address, please.
And, I do want to thank the question just asked. The house just to the lot of lot two. Okay, tremendous amount of damage property lines. A lot of issues with my property. I just wanted to make sure that this is on that.
Any other public comments? Sir.
Oh, calm down, I live in 7836. Um, this is just an opinion. I've been there for six years. Also, it's free. I'm sure progress is a bad idea. Also, reason. I have a thinking of existing piece plan. Finding it up just because you could get somebody to help. Right, that's called a threat. It's good, but it's built for the fact that you're gonna have two houses there, one existing, one new. Then one third one is probably gonna Walker Wood. Kind of more than a hot pot. If you've already got an existing home, you can't change this rate. Now, after certain points on due into my goal. I have this, I've pared down the existing at one. And you don't have heard me long. I did one, well, two years. I get the lighting, like, build two more homes and start changing. Look at Old State Road from how it always asking to build on that. Eight papers that fell on the reason. Hundred grand shots. Off of that, I think. Action. Well, some of ground the driveways. Put band in the driveway on Old State Road, it was hard to get it out. Probably one of the three most out back in Walker Woods. Where they ordered on Walker.
Thanks, John. Any other public comment?
I have to I'm a little redundant, but at lot two, it's our yards. All times, so I mean and then secondly, any or a property line is not seen on the application with the is, but they're getting current and current owners of current houses are all within I was known and there is a up in.
Joe? Any other public comment? All right, Joe, do you have anything to respond or any further comments?
Could you read the ring? Do, um, this is part of a pass on to you to press that. You know.
I can, I know. This may not really know.
Yeah, we have
Great, thank you. Do I have any further comments from the board?
Yeah, I mean, I have a question, is there an order in which we want to do the, the development or the rehab in the home? For the first, I mean, what, which, which lot is gonna be developed first, I guess? Have you already made that determination, or?
Believe the shared access law will be like open so.
Is Delaware County Engineering insisting on the shared access on Old State?
They will not allow it.
Yeah, that's what she was saying, yeah. Yeah, we know that, we bumped into that.
All the shared access.
Right.
Yeah, I agree, the common access property not over amended, so.
No, but we're, but we're aware where Delaware County has gone through that for years, as I see it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Although I, I guess Mr. John who brought up the shared access, how, I guess I'm concerned about how that shared access is gonna be shared. Assuming in the D.
Yeah, through the I firmly do those all of the access.
That's my concern.
I mean, at some point, Old State's gonna get widened in the future. We all know that. It's gonna happen. Other thing is, is there a way to make sure in this, this document that lot three becomes a part of the Walker Wood HOA? I think it's that critical. It has to. Because I think future, you know, if you got some wild owner wants to do anything outside of what the HOA wants, that's gonna just stand there, no, that has to be a part of HOA. Should, should, does that need to be written into this?
Yes.
I think, Robin? Would, would that be acceptable to you?
If the H R L has.
Okay.
So it would definitely be a discussion that we need to have. I'm not sure, I know some evidence written as comments against files of or great in. But which will call that. Yeah, I, I think as a condition you're
I, I understand what you're saying, is that if the HOA rejected it, which I can't imagine they would, that's, that's not on you anymore.
Yeah, I mean, it's in their best interest.
In their best interest, yes.
To make sure the neighborhood standards are maintained.
Your staff has assigned all of them.
All right, any comments? Okay. I get a recommendation to approve zoning application ZON-22-02, Planned for Land LLC with modifications. Yes, for the HOA.
The move.
Second?
I'm sorry, can you? It's me, can you?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, on to the second rezoning application, ZON-22-03. The applicant is Joe Clase for 5495 South Old State Road in Lewis Center, Ohio. Joe, or, I'm sorry. Robin, do you wanna go ahead and give a staff report on this one, please?
Application from Planned for Land. Regarding the site at 5495 South Old State Road in Lewis Center. Applicant requesting to rezone 465 acres from our residential district. Single lot into two separate lots. Lot one will contain 3.6 acres. Lot one, as I just writing on. Site is located on the east side of Old State Road. The applicant is requesting rezone that lot on lot single family. It's possible. Most development would comply with all single-family residential standards. With 50 feet highway easement, belt foot, dump of water easement. We look sanitary easement. 75 with three preservation area located. One of the burdens is requested. Fires the plant. Site is surrounded by a former residential district, so southeast and west. Who's that, the staff report will tell you the area photograph and the site plan. How they are in, pre-summarize for the applicant, zoning request, density, unit count, parking, minimum four area development standards would fall. Find the single family. Of the last application. Say whether it's a Delaware County Regional Planning Commission did recommend additional approval of application subject to confirmance by RBC staff, that it does not plan. If single driveways are not feasible, then it would require common access.
Great, thank you, Robin. All right. Does the applicant wish to come up and speak to this project as well, please? I guess we'll do name and address again.
Joe, please. One's up there. Have anything that's possible?
Possibly? Oh, this is... This is what? Do we want to let it sit?
Thank you. Any comments from the board?
I'm a little confused. Didn't this one come up before? Seems like a pre-op. But we have. Okay. That's where we saw this. Okay. And that's just leaving it all. Okay, thank you. I think you're going to insist on the shared driveway, isn't that right? That also came out.
I mean... I had some comments, but I won't wait till your time.
Go for it.
To be honest, I found this a little confusing at first because on the application, on the first page, it says you're changing the zoning from FR1, which is Farm Residential 1, to Farm Residential 1, which I thought was confusing. Because then when you go on page eight, it says you're going to be a single-family planned residential district, but your gross density lot coverage is .46 units per acre, but you're asking to split it into two lots. So I'm a little confused as to what's going on here. If it's just a simple lot split into two lots, two single families, that makes sense. But first, it says you're staying farm residential, and then it says you can have that up to .46 units per acre, but that's not what's being shown here. So if you could sort of clarify that for me, that's one thing that I was confused about. And I kept looking at the plans going, well, the plans show a simple two houses, but that's not what the text says. And then again, the question about the county engineer asking for, you know, another drive, whether that's been figured out yet as well. So I'd like to get some of this stuff resolved.
As the farm residential, it should be discussed here.
Okay.
Certainly, the application is...
Yeah, so .4 units per acre. I'm trying to do the math. So you're doing it based on that one, not the lower one.
Plus the two lots together.
The two lots together, okay.
Four, two lots, five acres.
Excuse me while I try to do some math here.
The county engineer, we did a brush down for the session. That's something that... So. Not sure.
The intention was still just those two houses on the lot, right? The original one, which is back here, and the new one? Yeah. Yeah, that's what I thought. Right.
Oh. He's doing some math. Any other comments? I will ask one question about track two. So the new proposed house, is there a reason why... And I'm not saying that the access point or what's being proposed needs to move necessarily, but the house, if there was an opportunity to maybe shift that up further north only because the lot there, and you can see where it falls off, you're kind of building right there, so you would have to almost grade out to the edge of that lot and kind of be at a high point, being that far to the south, if that makes sense. And what I'm obviously trying to avoid again here is just if you come off that edge of the house and, you know, gradually slope down for drainage, it's going to be a fairly steep slope possibly going down there just because you're on the edge of that... You know, you're cutting into that hillside, I guess is what.
Based on the way I draw the additional walkout.
Okay.
Great. Actually, there is...
I got you. Yeah.
But it's something you identified.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I figured out the math issue. It's units per acre of the gross lot area, not of the net, which excludes with the right-of-way and everything. So it's everything altogether, not with the right-of-way. So I think that's gross versus net is where the confusion lies.
Any other comments from the board on this one before we open to public comment? All right, at this time, we'll open up to public comment. Same rules as the first application. Try to limit your comments to three minutes and avoid any redundancy. Do we have any... Anybody in the public wishing to speak tonight? Nope? Okay. Up?
I did it. Two nine four five. Also, the... This is new. After.
All right, any other comments, public? All right, and the board, anything further to add? All right, can I get a recommendation to approve the zoning application ZON-22-03 for Plan for Land LLC with modifications? Do we have modifications? No modifications, okay.
No modifications? Change it.
With... Submit it.
The move.
Second.
Close.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, now on to our third and final application, which is application ZON-22-05, New Gen Tennis Facility. This is located on Green Meadows Drive in Lewis Center, Ohio. Robin, can you please go through the staff report on this one?
I know from the outset that we did meet the applicant, the staff and fire department staff, and the applicant yesterday, I think we did. Some of the things that were part of course. Some were repetitive.
Sounds good.
This is an application from New Gen Tennis Facility. On, the applicant is requesting to use a approximately 3.736 acres from office district to another joint party to allow person door outdoor operations. Pickleball court through the dome of our old warehouse structures. Five tennis courts under dome. Three tennis courts under apartment roof. Office and service building space, apartment area. 2014, the one downshift for these group development plan. Office district. This property inherent. Site is ordered to north and south right hand, right from office districts. Up to the east is Connoisseur Rare Rooms and that part one parcel. Up though, right to the west is Green Meadows Drive. Page two, you can see the site layout, the building count, again, proposing six pickleball courts. House, five tennis courts under dome. Courts under apartment roof. Office and service building space, we constructed in two phases. 2,450 square feet of office space initially. Additional 6,000 square feet proposed. So open space proposed is 42.5% per level. Evening parking spaces are proposed. They are asking for other versions of parking. This is not currently listed as a duty. As a gym and... As a system. For lighting, I will mention, with the staff report, it was assumed the applicant is not providing a light plan. The applicant has provided that light plan. For your day, and not as the company. Let the applicant address that. Signage happening is proposing on two posts to a metal sign to put on. The bill with both sign areas. Home standards, building setbacks, most hollows. Perfect 50. Right away, three meters wide. One side to the south is 25 feet. The build zone, the door side will be 12.5 feet. Two divergences have been requested. One from section 14, one from section 6. Requested to allow each phase to pursue less than five acres of property, given the entirety of this property to be purchased at all and split by the applicant. Again, we ever mentioned parking. Eversion. And it thought that there would have to be a divergence or not somebody providing a plan. It's a letting plan. And there exists a law. Of course, the end use map, we weren't captured. And does identify this parcel. Other staff comments, again, many of these items have been addressed through the staff report. So the applicant has provided green range of the dome structures, openness towards all fours. Staff would like clarification as amount of time per year that the dome would be protected. Staff would like clarification as permits of mechanicals for the dome structures, whether or not they would use. As for additional materials, dumpster enclosure. And for clarification, sorry, lighting, which the applicant presents. Delaware County Engineers Office did indicate, did indicate, which now the staff that a shared access and possibility on the north side of the site, the access to parcel directly. Staff would like clarification as. Fire department did have some concerns about emergency access to the rear property, as well as highlighted wire lines. Company, we'll certainly address. That's your person. Operations department also requests removal of the grass and dairs from the tree type. That's recently declared. Highway OD and R. The Delaware County Regional Planning Commission has not yet heard this application in the area yet. They're meeting Thursday basis.
Hey, can the applicant just go over the project with us?
Again, the parent parcel is an existing feature. And we have, or has already established that technical, that's called cap. What we have. Type of the green men are trying. That would be the connection from this area. And this site is actually just more of a more industrial district. Which is not a part of some bridge, but industrial. And then two vehicles. Road road. And then, of course, you have a water yard. But other parts of the piece are more. Those two zones is for another piece. And in those for... Lots of... So the building that we came in for after 10, that's the office. So that is the site, it's only to be added in the whole refuge. Also, the site for phase one will be more of a choice of here. So the portion is the... Those gaps, the test for its under dome, we'd be at that storm in towards Green Meadows. And then we have a small office building, service structure that is in the part. That's way in the middle of the farm, second end. That's smaller village. The second phase will include less of buildings. Facing on phase two, where the training will be five tent. Now, the buildings in the picture, phase two, were also compatible and consistent with the architectural elevations you see in the pattern. That farm and off style, modern, white. Those are trim. That is part of that smaller service and office structure. Then the property that will be built will be. That same architectural style and color and material will be too. To the other rooms as well, in the second phase. For access, the client will be on one. For access, the, um, client will be having one curcut on the actual property. The entirety of the big three block six acres is allowed to have, uh. Two curcut toward. So the seller and I have a negotiation that we probably need to be on access drive and push our assets. On the common line. So the sellers are made to track. That's shared access by customers. Or that, whether it's them, that also works for us, we need to adjust the line into a test. But that is the direction we're going to have. Um, related to setbacks, we didn't provide your setback. In the evaluation layout of the original two thousand fourteen test. How the setbacks developed on the surface as all of them. I can take you through the text in a moment. There's a few that I keep on specific. Out as to standards included. Later, we are going to install internally into such. Action inside yard. You will know on the site, we are as well as. Have the bill to deliver. I can have copies. However, yes, we can edit the artistic, uh, don't have any copies. How can I pass that out?
Is it different than the twenty?
No, definitely. I just want to make sure.
It's the same thing.
It is okay. So as you can tell, we have a lot of that's anywhere on that line. Because it's like one of them installed there. So if we're going to put that comment access right there, there can still be a side blotcher on access drive. But again, there won't be any of this. I believe your code addresses your parking setbacks. My parking area is not necessarily five aisles. So it would be fine to put a five aisle right on that column. Do you think the county engineer will appreciate the comment access drive? As of the seller's legal and file, it's only totally for three one. If you would mind, we could jump to setbacks. I would like to take you to, again, the data table on the site. And also. I'll tell. Our development test. That sets out for the relevant standard. It might be easy. Easy to. It is easy. So from the front, from Green Meadows Drive, there will be a fifty. From the Green Meadows Drive. Of course, we have the sound twenty five, but the other zone. Not a blue. And then. That will be a little. On the side, which is more probably on there, we is called public half buildings. And that's a middle one. The rear is a forty foot. So pretty good setbacks, I know it's all compiled. Perfect setbacks, we still don't have, maybe fifty. Five. Five more. And we can ask her. And we are going to be four. Only ask you, we have another best setback. And we see that as well. Twenty-nine feet from the waterway. So there will be a Wednesday upper, just an alley, cottage. My. If we show on three metal sides. Then you can see all at the end. On the side, which is out there will be a five foot. But absolutely, it's been kind of eaten and, uh, well, you're, uh, and obviously kind of the, uh. In the rear, there, there is someone who's been posted on the lot lines around. From, sorry, center. If you go to, um, page ninety-four. You will see we have a limited corner of the site. Nothing there is. Three of. That's. Realize now that one of those I was putting through these. Off the decisions. The new pass. And to you, you know. The one line. That we just figured that. As, as a landscape. But that is your landscape details. Um, if you were to go to page eleven, twenty-twelve of the development test, this is the lighting plan. Now, we did not have a lighting plan at the age of. But like when I filed, it disappeared, we talked about. We don't have a nighttime operation in our code. But even though we don't have nighttime operation, it is required to be included. A lighting plan. In addition to the lighting plan, we have lighting roshers and. A slight change from the two thousand. Recently, that, when we do eleven and twelve, some of the ones do need our outdated, no longer available. Or equivalent in language and we're using the same sort of colors. As we like. So in my version of the test, I often. After I leave. That I would be stopping the confusion in terms of the tests I've been tracking early on and state. I didn't have. That labor in the. We can help. Description. However, using one of my version, I'm strictly in which. Of that response, we're not going to say. Not seen about that, yes. For this. That would be so. So we can change that text. So we led to that, I can show this language to staff. If you agree, but we're not going to provide you with the test. I also wanted to just read. The architectural test. That we want. Of our architectural coverage. And we can also see this on coverage on page nine and ten of the local test. These are the versions from the original test because part of our, um, the architecture. Of the, and thought of as the. So you can see there, though, it's a very consistent. All the materials are already planned. I work, I wrote some notes before. It talks about if there are roofs that are slopes, they will use the same dimensional shape as this. All of the test. However, we don't think it's a good. Most structures. And those are different and very unique. But though with that test, the domes are fabric, they have. And then that final material, I do have. But that's why the test was just up to two. As well as the possibility of alternative for that pickleball court. It would be. I didn't have, um, the. Was on the. A on the. Of possible. Down there, and it was not. It's a scenario, we're a little trapped. Yes. Part of the industrial district. And this one is in. We did see that very last of people. So that is what it means in the top. I mean, I meant. First, if it's a metal building that is used to be a wall half, of course. And all of science. Not long. All of that is in the test. Related to, um, the staff's comment about. Oh, yes, we're all aware of the downstairs, any service structure. And. When that language from the test, there's a. We're just not showing it. Sorry, so obviously. But those details will have to be. Um, let's see. Related to the fire's purpose. Right, we heard that there were two items. Uh, two, I essentially, a private access or emergency access to the rear of the property. And we would have a no sense. Access drive to a problem. But at some point, once it reaches past the parking area, it will become an emergency access. You know, full, private will drive right, like it would be allers. Person. Whatever needs your code, that can also be worked. Allers are waiting. But people certainly are wants and need and they want to. Leading to that. Probably also heard a patient. It's more younger. And certainly there's those not building, there are a lot of tireless. Please be. For sure, we will work with. On that. We will be doing that. Related to small block management, you don't have any service retention. Oh, it's. Our worst case scenario, because it's. That's it. Is to put underground stories on this park. So they need to use the whole parking. Also, all those. So putting that underground, it sounds to me as a. Heard. That is which is. And no, and a question. Know what it creates. In another scenario, possibly we have a discussion. Of the. Of the. That the engineer get it to. Out, because there is a pond down there. It wasn't initially installed to. In our, our properties. But it is sizable. And if that has been made to. Over the morning and the county engineer is. For our stormwater, that will be. More portable and impactful. For our potential needs. People may have general, uh, she's not so weird. Uh, also wanted to just touch on the. I know this is throughout the old text. Original, coming. I should basically mention they don't totally imply to. But it's true because this means that's this commercial office district. That is what the town should protect. That's important. However, we do think we are in accordance with the town's comp plan of this project. Because this is a commercial recreational use and it is. With the town. In the area. As well as we add to the town's connected. After. Also, this is in line with the original developer. That is. Oh, I mean, it's like, they've also signed his own name. Uh, but anyway, in terms of the original developer. What uses that will list to have. Recital, institutional, commercial office and recreational. Development. That the AR, um, in the. I guess all I have is. I do have more boards than we have in the top chart.
Well, you said that this was originally a planned commercial or a planned residential district? That you needed some divergences to occupy a couple of properties was?
This is a planned commercial office district.
Okay.
Village, which is exactly what we're going for now. Same as the.
Okay, so there's no divergence from that.
No, not for.
After that.
This was always planned for commercial office. National.
What are the hours of this business? What are the?
So it's, um, I think how our operating. Better. The domes are seasonal, the domes, you know, mid, mid March to mid November. But there's school board facilities, under buildings and outdoors. So can you? If that's what I answered the question, where is it?
Well, well, being reasonable for the question because you talked about, you know, that you didn't believe you needed the lighting plan, but, but you put it in.
A lot of jurisdictions, I can answer that, that's my fault. Um, not really a fault, we look at it going, the police has. And then, um, a lot of jurisdictions say that, that they really don't enforce.
That's kind of where I was going with the school with the hours. No nighttime operations. But the dome, you want the dome is because you want to make these outside part of the year.
Yes, the dome can be related to mid, but I don't get that from mid March to. I'm sorry, they go back to mid March for the year season. So the people off the. The dome. They can keep. After that season, they are available.
Wouldn't that be a divergence in itself because those kind of things aren't covered in our code anywhere? Is that correct, love?
I don't believe it would be a.
So you think when it was.
As long as the document text specifies that those.
So it's allowed as far as our, our code development text is, is concerned.
It would be. Specific.
But I can clarify. If you look at the text of them. This is literally just a development test. Only. Only part of the. Subject to. The rest of that.
Yeah.
So that's another way that you know, a lot of the portion of. Plus they come in for these all. Of the test. Only the. This little part of this. This is only.
At the end of the day, you'll have to comply with Delaware County, whatever they want to do with water. You'll have to comply with Orange Township Fire, with whatever they want to do for access. Or you know, those things will be taken care of or nothing can move forward. I'm not personally opposed to. Domes that portion of the year.
You showed exactly where the property is.
Um.
I. It's like the one thing I can't see it, your property outline looks.
We do have a altar survey in our packet, but that pond is south of us. So that line that's just above that pond. Even up in the.
That's what I thought it was.
It's not quite that far up in the.
Yeah.
About right there. You took a linear line over to the railroad track. And that's the site, but we have an altar survey that shows a better. We'll show you this one, this piece here. This existing condition there shows you the vacant tract with the lines splitting off. Or the track.
Yeah, but it doesn't relate to this.
All area, yeah.
That you included, so.
We would, we would have to draw like a. On that very old. Exactly.
So, just a couple of questions, I, and that's all right, I don't know if you.
Oh, no, no.
Okay.
I have questions, but I like to go.
So, I know one of the divergences in regards to parking, this is pretty unique. Um, what I think would be required would be almost double or, I don't know, whatever the number came out to. You're showing sixty-three, is that correct?
Yes.
Um. I've never played pickleball, how many people are on the court?
So.
Or playing at one time.
Talking about this yesterday, so say you have that five or. Now, you know.
Yeah.
I was hearing that there's only twenty. It's not like a bunch of spectators are sitting there.
Yeah.
It's the players, you know, they have a large to guess and it's. Or you know.
Yeah, yeah, and so that's where, I was kind of getting a similar number, but I was taking a guess. With the dome, the, the tennis courts, and, and this is o- obviously making an assumption that every single court is being, is used and then there's a. Someone watching, like each one. You're, you're right at or over that amount of, of parking. I'm not necessarily saying it's low. Um, but there, there's a couple of things regards to the parking is, is. You know, I, I'm, I'm not opposed to the divergence whatsoever. Um, I, I get it, this isn't a commercial, you know, uh, facility that's, that's going to be, you know, like a grocery store. Uh, facility that's, that's going to be, you know, like a grocery store or something that's going to be bringing in a lot of traffic. Um, but. The, there, there's two things just in general with the layout. And, and I don't know if this is something that could be done with, you know, extending the parking or, or maybe relocating it or something. But, um, just looking at this and, and I'm going off the scale here, really rough. But it, it, it appears that from the closest parking stall, the one in the top right corner on, on this image, the handicap stall there. At the top right to the front facade, so phase two is, is, you know, not built. Is about two hundred and forty feet or two hundred, it's, it's somewhere in there, two hundred thirty, two hundred forty feet. Um, it, it's quite a distance, uh, to, to travel. Um, in, in, again, I'm not saying how to design it or necessarily, but if there was an opportunity to possibly extend. The parking relocated, maybe face, the, the, the phase separated out, uh, differently to where maybe the parking is closer to the facilities. Um, I, I don't know if that's, if that's even possible. I, I get the complexities of the site as narrow as it is and as deep as it is. You're limited to, you know, certain designs. Um, but that distance seems a little bit excessive to me. Uh, is, you know, from, from, that's the closest stall, not, you know, you go back to the, the furthest most, you're, you're probably walking all over three hundred feet.
But I think definitely. I'm trying to. It's, uh, and possibly add some. I don't know if it's usable either.
Yeah.
Certainly changes cost and layout. And I don't think they can change. This is my impression. And we. Trying to figure out whether some of us would purchase any of those off. However, um, these athletic players are going to be able to walk. Breakings. And walk, you know, standing down. Definitely it'll be no problem in terms of. That's really walkability. But if, and I don't think we need any more practice. Since the number we. Have and don't know of any close. Close in. That requirement of note. Yeah, we agree with. This does support our users who we. Look at if there's any consensus on. Closer to your part of the building.
Um, I'm just curious on, on phase two, what, what is the proposed timeline between one and two? I, I'm sure there's a lot of factors in there of, you know, how many people are using these facilities and demand and things like that. What, is there a, a timeline that you guys have in mind?
Yeah, we'd like to construct these. All the. Uh, phase two was a five and ten.
Okay. Um. Okay. The, the only other, other thing that I have that before everybody else can comment in, but it's. I, I, so I do like the, the design of the office space that you guys have with the kind of the farmhouse look and the water table. Um, in the board and baton metal roof. I, I, I do like that. Um. You know, obviously the dome is a temporary structure that's only up for, you said it was November to March. Was that? So, yeah. Okay. Uh. Obviously from a scale perspective, when that thing is up, it's going to dwarf this building significantly. And I, there, there's one of these facilities, not unless I knew that what you're doing, but there's a dome athletic facility. And I, I see it, I've seen it a lot and I can't remember where it is. But it's like the Bo Jackson or something. I don't know, whatever, something, that's what it's named. It's somewhere here close, but, um, it's, it's significantly bright, like when the sun's out. Not that it is out that much when those months say your name. But.
Oh, sun.
Reflect like very, like, yeah. No, I didn't see, maybe I missed it, but I didn't see any like reflectivity, uh, in the, in the dome information. Uh, or the packets you guys provided on that material. I mean, obviously, you know, somewhat durable and, um. You know, I'm not concerned about it, like weathering or it's only up temporarily. If there's repairs that need made, those can happen when it's out. But, uh. I, I don't know if you guys have these facilities or put them up elsewhere. I, I, and it's not as much of a concern because we're not next to like a major highway or, or like twenty-three. This isn't right up on top of twenty-three. Um, but I think like from a scale perspective, it, I feel like it would significantly dwarf this, this building. Um, but again, I mean, I understand the challenge of, you know, those winter months and keeping this facility operational. A lot many people are going to want to be out there and with weather and everything.
Right. For me, that's sure of this.
Yeah, that would be good.
There's one in university since that. There's a cow. My S C A pool. The wedge with golf tennis. Have a one in. One of higher. From Cleveland State, there's two folks soccer and tennis. Then a one that can be more tennis. Domes. One central higher level.
What are the dimensions of the dome? How tall is it?
The dimensions.
Oh. Thirty-six.
Okay.
It is.
I want.
Height of the building is, I'm guessing.
The what?
The building height.
I think she said thirty-six.
But that's the dome, that's the dome.
The dome. Oh, the building.
Yeah, because you were saying that it could dwarf the building, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I'm kind of curious what that building height.
Yeah, well, building house not labeled.
I'm, I'm, I'm guessing that's probably fifteen or twenty feet.
Maybe, yeah.
We have a building that's standard in the text. That's what I'm having and I would fit to comply with. Yes. For the moment, looking at my law standard. I know there, but our height district is this.
Estimative.
Yeah, twenty feet.
Uh, yeah.
Because I can't answer your question about a dome dwarfing the building.
It will definitely be a smaller office service structure. It will be building piece. And in phase two will have a bigger. Right, and it will be larger in size and. But, um, the height district is found under P J team of the text. The planned commercial office district may have fifty for the height. We are under fifty.
Oh, yeah.
But I think our building makes the. For well under fifty. That is required and.
So let me ask this. The, from an operational standpoint, you guys, is this something that, you know, you guys, or, or the intention is to have? Um, like leagues coming in or is this training or is it just open to the public? It's just, you just pay if you want to use the facility? How, how does this, how does this work?
That's more of an operational question, so I didn't see that.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I did see those. Yeah, thank you. I think you have one in here. You had a, you had a image of that.
We should have.
Yeah, it is in here.
Yeah, it's, it's.
I remember seeing.
I think this thing is just a.
Yeah.
So this public is.
Public.
Yes. I. I have a question on, um, if you need to answer something about that, but I have another question.
Uh. Yeah. Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Uh, the, between phase one being built and consideration of phase two, I think it's at five to ten years. What's the driving factor that says, hey, we may speed that up and do that earlier? Yeah. So we're about to do this.
Okay.
And what will be in that space, the phase two space until phase one is built? Or until phase two is built, sorry? Mm-hmm. Nice, Katie. Okay. Okay.
How long does it take to take one down and put it up?
I'm curious.
How long does it take to take it down and to put it back up?
Depends on weather.
Yeah.
But it takes, uh, no more than a week.
Okay.
More than two weeks. I don't look correctly, but.
So I, I assume that the dome has a emergency or a emergency power generator that would back up in case of power outage or something like that. Is that something that was intentional to stay there year round when the facility is taken down? And obviously the generator is going to stay there. It's ground bound, or is it a, something that would be removed along with everything?
Yes, it's my understanding it's a service structure. We're here.
Be there for it.
Okay.
While we're taking down it.
So that was one of my questions of, is this like a, a small building? Um, or is it just like a transformer on the ground? It's just a transformer on the ground. Is there going to be any screening like we would have on a dumpster or something? Um, that's not really very well laid out here. Um, I would request if it's just a transformer on the ground, that it be screened. If it's a building, it could look like, you know, compatible with the other design features of the area.
It won't be building.
Okay.
I will shrink the. No, that is, that's managers. I think that. People provide the law standard. I think all processions would. Um, we actually have. It is in here off.
Yeah, it's okay. Some of us are more visual and, um. Text driven. I'll just, I'll just throw that out there if I don't see it. Uh, or if I see something on paper visual that conflicts with the test text. I'm just curious. So, yeah, I'd, that's something I'd like to see with the dumpster, um, screening detail and things like that. Um. We're done?
Um, yeah, I'm good.
Are you sure?
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Dennis?
Um, I had a couple of comments. I think you've answered most of them. Um, I do have concerns with the fire department and the access to the rear. Um, especially since it's a long way and if someone like, you know, I don't want to say has a heart attack while they're playing pickleball. Uh, you're going to want to get an ambulance back there. Um. Coordinate with the fire department because, uh, those permanent pavers usually have a weight limit. Um, you have to make sure that whatever truck, uh, they're planning on bringing down that road will, um, work with that weight requirement of those, of the paving, whatever you do. And so just coordinate with them on that. Um. You know, um, I agree, you know, maybe having the, um. Parking there might help. Uh, it looks like you did make a change, uh, on your landscape plan. Your new one, which is great because I had a comment about the signage with the solid base. And it looks like you switched it from A to B. Yeah, to more of a monument sign. So thank you because that was one of my, uh, comments. Um, I was somewhat concerned, uh, about the height, uh, because I had trouble reading it, um, scale wise. Um, of the dome, the thirty-five is generally the height limit for our residential area anyway, thirty-six feet. So it's not going to be overpowering, especially since it's along the railroad tracks. Um, in terms of like your, um, buildings, uh, I did have sort of a couple of architectural comments. I do like, you know, the farmhouse look. Um, your renderings or your elevations are sort of, um, for me, a little confusing because your roof looks like a seam metal roof. But yet you're telling me it's going to be asphalt shingles in your materials. So I would make sure. The middle top says asphalt shingles, but it's depicted or rendered as a standing seam metal roof.
I think that is just a weird rendering here, but I do know.
Okay. All right, but it's also shown here. This is a, a seam metal pattern. So just, just clarify, I mean, I don't care either way. Um, I like the metal. I understand asphalt is sometimes more practical and cheaper. Just settle on sort of one and the other and use those materials as your pattern book. And same with your, uh, stone water table underneath your, uh, board and baton party, which I'm, I'm fine with that. Um. Is, um, in your text. Let us know what the height of that water table is because right now, the way your text is written, it says it's four, six and eight inch heights. Those are actually the heights of your simulated stone, not the height of your water table. That makes sense? Mm-hmm. Just so, you know, I'm looking for a water table that's normally about two feet tall, not something that's, you know, four, six or eight inches. That's just a curb.
Definitely, um, revise on.
Um, and that's just like a little pet thing of mine since I'm a. Sorry. Uh, and yeah, if you could put the building height on, uh, the elevation so we have an idea. I'm sure it's well under the fifty, but since there's no scale on here, I'm assuming your door might be seven feet. It could be two feet tall. It could be six feet. There's, so just let us know what the building height is so we know that it matches what's in the text. Um. I think that's, that's enough.
Are, are the domes heated? Hmm? Or if, if you have another contractor that comes in and puts, puts the domes in and takes them out? That's kind of, kind of what I'm assuming is that, just like you've already mentioned, the places that have them, I'm thinking that's probably what happens. Here's a contractor that comes in, installs these, takes them out when necessary. And those are, and those are heated. Oh, that's kind of leading me into, I, I suspect you're going to want to run this year round. I know you're deciding now that you don't want to operate at night. I can see that being the next step if it goes well.
That might.
I think the lighting probably is appropriate.
If we have business to make money, not.
Well, exactly. I hope the business goes well.
Yeah, exactly.
And, and that you decide to do that. Hey, this is really working. And and that you decide to do that, hey, this is really working.
So, um, with the lighting, I think a lighting thing would be important, especially because I think you might, especially since it's an indoor facility.
And 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 as they as as they mentioned about the parking, you'll think about, think about that, how that whole link needs to be made of whether parking could be put in some other spots to make it closer to where people are using it, you know. I get it why you laid out this plan, but you've got this whole link. Thank you, just 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 play with the think about, think about the play with the money, play with where it goes. I think that's going to be a benefit versus I know some people, we walk the last way. They're not going to like the long walks.
Well, I think even if it's maybe just ADA accessible parking. So that, you know, someone's in a, I know pickleball seems to be very popular among the aging generation. I love to say that, I'm trying to figure out the appropriate use. But so that having the pickleball courts be more accessible might be a a good idea.
Yeah, because even if they if their quote unquote guests are able to come, right, all of them may not be athletically inclined.
And I have a request next time if we can have a bigger photo metric. Lighting print.
I believe the PDF is more.
Okay. That I understood. I didn't realize it came as a PDF as well because I didn't have time to to review the material like you said at the last minute, so.
Do you want to play the right research?
Actually, you know, if it comes as a PDF, that is fine. I can just blow it up on my computer as large as I need it with my failing eyesight.
I have one last comment. So the the date, the timeline of the dome, and maybe I missed that, is that in here? Does it say like when it's when it would be up? So from March or from November to March?
It is not written.
Is that something that we can put in here or is there going to be based on?
We could add a stipulation. That season use of the dome will be.
Yes, yeah, I I.
I would feel I would feel more comfortable with that because if you don't have that time limitation, by implication, it's a permanent structure. So I would just, you know, just say approx. I know I know a lot of people don't like the terms approximately, but just so we know that it's not a permanent structure.
We will have approximately estimated.
Yeah, maybe estimated use, estimated use.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
You know, weather depending. You know, because if we have like, you know, late winters or early summers, you might take it down earlier or later.
As long as it's not staying up until, you know, June and then going back, you know, in August or something. Okay.
Yeah, I was I was thinking on that that probably needs also maybe an end to, right, and then, and she's saying mid, mid March.
Mid November.
That's when it's when it's going out, right, mid November and then coming down.
Mid March, yeah.
So I'm just thinking, you know, if the weather's bad or whatever, it's approximate, but, you know, we get two, three weeks out. And now the weather is still good, but it's still locked. So I think there needs to be some thing that says it will be down by this.
Sort of like a sunset clause, it must be down by June 1st or something.
And no later than.
And put up no earlier than, you know, November 1st, I don't know, make some dings that y'all can live with.
Yeah, I don't know, Rob, do you have a preference on that?
Personally, I would probably prefer to.
It might be better because, you know, like five, 10 years down the road, someone's going to pull the development test. They might not pull the actual, you know.
Maybe in the architecture section where you're talking about the dome, you can just say that the intention is for it to be up from these dates.
Some of this is going to be related to the contractor and their schedules, you know. So that always has to be adhered to with respect to whatever we put in there.
Yeah, I mean, that's why there's some flexibility.
Right, there has to be flexibility. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
It gets so hard to summon you and keep it up in that condition. Yeah. Who knows?
Any further comments from the board? So how long do you think it would take to make, it sounds like you've already made some of the changes that were in the staff report? The remaining ones, do you know roughly the timeline of when you think you could have that revised by? Yeah.
The the plans. What do you think about the engineering plans to actually start?
Okay, so do we still have Delaware Regional?
On the 26th.
We have this week on the first.
This Thursday, that's right, that's right, okay, so.
But they will resolve.
Okay.
You have to you have to resolve the fire department and they sign off on it, right? You have to resolve the water issues with Delaware County. Yeah, where they've signed off on and approved the plan, because those are critical to taking any real stats.
We don't know that for sure, but I don't think that's announced. And if you turn it back, we're going to deal with it.
I have to, you have to, right.
So what's our next available?
So my my recommendation with the next regular.
Yep. Okay. Any objections to that, June 14th? From applicant side, are you guys good?
Two books for us and we would want all of these comments addressed at the end of the week.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you. That'll be too.
Yep.
On these comments.
Yep. Members of the board, is there anybody who has an issue with the 14th? Maybe have a scheduled meeting there. No? Good?
I'm good.
Okay.
Well, can I get a recommendation to continue the hearing for rezoning application CON dash 22 dash 05 new gen tennis facility to June 14th, 2022 at 6:30 PM?
I'll move. Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.